Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
MHS Student Advisory Committee Presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name's Addison Hediger. At Marlboro High School, a wide variety of advanced placement courses are offered at the student, for the, to the student body. AP History, AP Chemistry, AP Physics, AP Biology, AP Music Theory, AP Literature and Composition, AP Studio Art, and AP Calculus, to name just a few. AP classes provide the opportunity to gain a further understanding of a subject and take a test in May based on the curriculum. Qualifying scores are often counted as college credits for entry-level college classes. Once a year, usually in the fall, AP students are invited down to an assembly called the AP Kickoff. Prizes are raffled off and smarties are passed out, because we're smarties. At the meeting, teacher leaders and administration are present and talk to the students about the importance of taking AP tests and doing well. Approximately 270 students at MHS are enrolled in AP classes and 550 exams will be taken at MHS in May 2018. Personally, through my experiences in AP classes, I have been taught a great deal and I feel lucky that we have a staff who is able to teach us these classes. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Thank you very much.
Hi there. I'm Tim Goliger. I'm the 11th grade representative for this committee. I'm here to talk to all of you about the upcoming auditions for the Central District Massachusetts Music Educators Association's Senior District Festival, otherwise known as Distrikt. This is a festival where high school students from all across the Massachusetts Central District have the chance to go through an audition process and depending on how the audition goes, be placed in an honor ensemble under the direction of a professional. Usually, these directors are active directors of professional ensembles, or they are academics such as college professors and the occasional high school director. Auditions for the chance to be a part of an ensemble at said festival will occur this Saturday. It's really an honor if a student auditions and gets into the ensemble, but just going and auditioning, really putting yourself out there is really what matters. And I'm very proud to say that Marlboro High School has a number of talented musicians auditioning for this festival. This year, we are especially thrilled to send representatives from the vocal, instrumental, and orchestral departments. I'm confident that with many hours of preparation that went into perfecting these audition pieces, along with the constant coaching from our wonderful music teachers at Marlboro High, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Piazza, Mrs. Bignalti, and Mrs. Crockwell, our students will go into the audition with a sense of self-confidence and a pride in their hard work. Great. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Allison Lucas, the line grade representative. I'm going to be talking a little bit about Marlboro High School Cross Country. Cross Country has really helped the transition into high school for me. And I joined late because of injury, but everyone was really welcoming and nice, especially the captains. And they really helped me and they answered all my questions. And I can trust them with anything. And we have a lot of fun, but we also work really hard at practice. We have some hard workouts. And meets are really fun and they're long, but they're super fun and it's really nice when we're done. We recently had leagues and we finished second out of five teams. And we had districts this past weekend and we finished fifth out of 32 teams. And we had two people on the girls' cross-country team that made states, which is this weekend, and we're all going to go and support them. And we hope they do really well. And the cross-country team is the best team I've ever been on because everyone is super nice. And especially being a freshman, it's kind of hard to make friends with the upperclassmen, but they're all super nice. And they'll look out for me throughout high school. And it's nice to have a friendly face in the crowd. And I'm glad I decided to do cross-country and I can't wait for another three years of it. Any questions?
Great. Questions from the committee.
Almost makes me want to run.
Almost.
Thank you.
We actually are missing Alicia, who had a soccer practice this evening. So Heidi, our student representative, 12th grade, would maybe like to say a few more?
Yeah, just to kind of add on to Madison first, that AP Kickoff that we had, I really enjoyed because it kind of gave us a chance to come together and see like, okay, like this, how much you owe for the classes and like, make sure we're all on the same page. So it really helped me feel better about what we're getting into and what we have to do. And then to add on to Allison too, I actually did cross-country for the first time this year. I had done other sports in the past, but, and I really liked, you know, you think of it as a more individual sport, but I thought it was a really strong team that I hadn't seen on any of the other teams I've been on. So I really enjoyed doing it. I thought it was a really positive experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Thank you all very much for the update.
Thank you.
Akeruno Student Visit Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Rupel Patel and I am the Whitcomb School Akeruno Exchange Program Coordinator, yes, amongst other things. I'd like to thank the school committee for allowing our students to come and share their experiences in Akeruno tonight. Thank you to the superintendent, Mrs. Murphy, and Mr. Bergeron with all their help and support while we were in Japan. We did have to call on them and I really appreciate the time and effort you put in from here. And thank you to Nancy Klein, who is not here, for all her hard work and support in making the Akeruno Exchange Program what it is. Marlboro and Akeruno share a special relationship. For the past 19 years, we have been sending students to our sister city. I have to say, 6,000 miles away to the west, there is a city where Marlboro, Massachusetts is the most important place in America. At a dinner, I was, just looked to my left and the "We Are Marlboro" video was playing. So it was pretty cool. It is also filled with the most generous and kindest people I have ever met. Our students were welcomed and immersed in Japanese life, going to school, after-school activities, and engaging with their host families. It is a life-changing experience and an eye-opening one as well. While the students are with their families, chaperones tour the schools and are able to see educational philosophies of a country so different to our own. Again, another eye-opening experience. As an educator, I am grateful to be able to see the education system I have learned about in so many classes in action. Finally, I'd like to thank Alex, Emma, Ayub, Bethany, Allison, Jack, Rachel Schooler, Rachel Powell, Tatum, and Abby for making the trip so easy to chaperone. We all appreciate the district's continued support of this program. And now I'm just going to have the kids come up and share with you.
Good evening. I am Alex Panos. Initially, I want to say that this experience has changed my life beyond words. Going to Japan has been the most valuable trip I've taken in forever, and I lived in London for a year. My favorite part of it had to have been going to school. Everyone was so welcoming, kind, thoughtful. And like, while I was there, we had a typhoon and it canceled the day of our school. And I was really disappointed by that because I was already so attached to everyone just by having one day to spend with them. I also really loved the Japanese teacher there. He was super funny and we got to learn about some traditional Japanese folklore, the tale of Princess Kaguya. It was really, really interesting, actually. Let's see. Every night since my return, I've kind of had trouble sleeping because I know another day in Japan is starting and I'm not there to experience it. But that's just a side effect from having a loving host family and, you know, missing them. Not being able to visit frequently is such a terrible thing. But I hope that as many kids can experience this trip as possible because it is the most life-changing thing that has ever come to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Burgess. Japan was an experience I will never forget. The trip changed me because I created friendships that will last my whole life. I'm still in contact with my host family. My sister Kotoko told me she'll try to go to America. My favorite part, my favorite memory was when me and my host sister were taking pictures together at a museum and it was really fun.
Hi, my name is Ayub Isawi and Japan was a life-changing experience. It was like very different from our lives. We don't have the same things that they do. Like example for school, they have to change their shoes instead of just walking in with their normal shoes. That was very, it was very easy to do, but it was very different and out of the ordinary. It was also like, everything was like very, the kind, everyone was very kind about like us having communication, like trying to communicate with each other and they were kind, like they, they tried to speak English with us. And a lot, a lot of people, they wanted to help us out with stuff, like one of the girls in my class, she tried helping me with the Japanese class, so she tried doing the work with me, like she was showing me what the Japanese words were. My host family, they were, they were very kind. We went to a trick art museum. It was really fun. And it's been hard, like coming back and also like not being able to see my host family. It's, I've been missing them because we had really fun times together. And missing all the students that we went to school with is really, really fun. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ally Garner. I'm a 7th grade student at Whitcomb and I am very grateful I got to participate in the exchange program this year. This has definitely changed me for the better. I know that I will treat everyone with the same kindness and generosity that my host family and everyone else in Japan gave me. They really paid attention to everything you told them. Because as soon as I told my family that I had three cats and I liked them, they took me to a cat cafe the next day.
That's awesome.
I think the most important thing I learned in Japan was whether or not you know or like a person, it doesn't matter. You should treat them with the same kindness and respect you would give your favorite family member. Although this lesson should be one you learn anywhere in the world, I think it comes through the most in Japan. My favorite memory I had from the short time that I spent there was the last night I spent there. My family made sure that they were all home and not in any jobs or clubs that they had so that all seven of us could all spend time together. We finished the puzzle of the Boston skyline I brought for them as a gift. We, they made me a nice meal and we watched a movie. Then the remainder of the evening was just spent doing whatever we wanted and giggling because I seriously think that's our best form of communication, just the laughs and the giggles. I want to thank Ms. Patel and Ms. Klein and everyone else in Japan who worked so hard to make this trip possible. I truly had the time of my life.
Hello, I'm Bethany Gibson and I am a 7th grader at Whitcomb Middle School. This was the best experience in my, probably in my entire life. It was a trip of a lifetime. I will always remember this trip because it was so much fun, meeting all these new people, experiencing so many different things, and it was really fun. My favorite memory is being with my family at Disney Japan. During the line for Space Mountain, Aika, my host sister, and I, we fell on the ground laughing for some reason and for at least five minutes straight and before we had to get up because the line kept moving. And I forgot we were, what we were laughing about because it was a long time ago, but what it matters is that we had fun. Another memory is that hanging out with Hannah and Maya, Tatum and Abby's host sisters. We all had so much fun together, playing games and eating pancakes. I learned from this trip that our friendship is stronger. Even we couldn't, even though we couldn't understand each other, somehow our communication was stronger and we had a lot of fun and it was the best time. Another thing is that they have different foods that are far from similar from ours. They have different traditions and different culture that I loved to experience. This trip has changed me by changing my perspective of the world, experiencing different cultures, trying new foods, and making new friends, which I hope will be, which I hope will have a lifelong friend. And I strongly encourage everyone to try out for this trip for a lifetime. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tatum Harding. My experience in Japan really had a positive effect on me. Three years ago, when my sister left for Japan, I thought she was the bravest person ever and I swore that I would never do what she did. Then come last year, I built up the courage to apply. As the trip got closer and closer, I got more and more scared, but I still went on with it. This trip was amazing and it made me realize that no matter how scared I am, it's not going to stop me from doing what I want to do. My favorite time I had in Japan was going to the aquarium. Not only was it very interesting to see the cool fish and animals, it was very, it was a very fun day to bond with my host family, even though it was pouring all day. Overall, I absolutely loved the trip and my family and I will miss them very much.
Good evening. My name's Avielle Hennessy. The Japan trip was one of the best experiences of my life. I met new people, created friendships, learned about the Japanese culture, and did things that I'll never forget. Most importantly, I tried new foods. One of my favorite experiences was going to school. All of the kids loved us and were so welcoming. We felt like we were celebrities. We got, we got to experience similarities and differences between the American and Japanese schools. We felt like they wanted us to be there and that they wanted us to learn about us and become friends. That was always their first question, can we be friends? And my answer was a big yes with two thumbs up and a smile. This trip has truly changed me. I remember going, I, we all may be different, but that we, that doesn't mean we can't be friends, even with our differences. Even though I was only there for 10 days, I created memories with Tayo, Sola, Hannah, Aika, and my host sister Maya. Whether with Tayo, Sola, and Tatum in science class, drawing portraits and laughing, or making pancakes, doing, doing crafts, or playing hide and seek with Hannah, Aika, Maya, Tatum, and Bethany. Those are memories that I, that will last forever. I hope I will see them again as they are my family and always be in my heart. I hope that others can get a chance to go to Akeruno and learn about others just like I did. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Kimataris and I had a life-changing experience a couple weeks ago when I visited Japan and stayed with my host family. I had thought this trip to be the coolest and most rewarding thing out there when I first applied. Once I actually took the trip, it was so much more than I imagined and I am forever grateful that I was able to be a part of this experience. But the worst part of this trip was saying goodbye. This was the worst part of this trip because you were so connected with your host family and they now still have a place in your hearts. And being halfway around the world from them can stir up some feelings right now just talking about it. Because I know we all cried that day. And Ayub can't say he didn't cry because we all know he cried. And now here's a letter my host brother gave to me and told me to read it when I left. "Jack, I enjoyed 10 days with you very much. I think that it was 10 days. I felt very short. We couldn't go out much because the rain continued, but I also enjoyed my time at home talking. It was really fun days. Thank you." From Tys. Bad English, but there's English in there. I want to say this letter is my favorite memory because even though we couldn't speak the same language, he still knew some English and the words that he came across were words that can show something, that can mean something, so I could relate to it. Like, we both played soccer and we're both number 20, woo. And we had soccer club after school and we ran approximately around four miles, the, and combined with the whole day, and even though it rained all the time, we never played outside because their field is mud. So we go inside around all like four floors, all the way around 10 times, very tiring, but I held it through. Yeah, I think the letter is my favorite memory because I will, I'm able to keep this forever until water gets on it and destroys it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Powell. Japan has truly been a trip of a lifetime. What amazed me was how kind everyone was and it's truly another level of kindness. One of my favorite, favorite memories was going to school for the first time. As I entered the room, I knew everyone was staring at me. It was a very uncomfortable feeling. No one really started to smile or move to me until the end of the day. I felt so excited when my Japanese classmates started to talk to me. I felt like I was now welcomed in their community and they accepted me. This changed my perspective of how new students feel when they come to a new school. I now know they, how they feel and from now on, I will try to be the first friend to speak up and introduce my friend, myself. I never want anyone to feel the way I did for a long time, but the whole trip was really amazing and I hope everyone who goes has a great time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Schooler. Going to Japan was an amazing experience. While I was there, I saw how different life can be from what we are used to. The day we met our families, mine took me to the mall and then back to their house. Later that night, we decided to play Nintendo and so they set up the DSs, which they had four of, and I got ready to play. But this was my first time and I was just really terrible. On the last weekend, my family took me to Harajuku and they showed me so many shops and took me to Kittyland, which is this big store and it has all these sections like dedicated to cartoon characters, which is really, really cool. I've learned so much from this experience, like how cool it is when people try their best to learn your culture, even if it's just a little bit. In Japan, people are so nice and it felt really good to hear them talk English because it showed that they really cared and you could know that they really did.
Save the best for last, I guess. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Panier and I teach health and wellness at the Whitcomb School. Miles traveled, 6,701. Time flying on a Boeing 787 Dreamliner, 13 hours. Time zone differences, 13. Days of rain in Japan, 11. Category of typhoon, none, 3. New friends on Facebook, 5. Days away from my wife and dog, 12. Being a student of Japan with 10 Marlboro students, priceless. This was amazing trip. Every time I think about our trip and our guest, our hosts over there, it really breaks my heart. It's an unbelievable experience. The respect we got over there, we were treated like royalty, like we came off Air Force One. It was unbelievable. One of the highlights of my trip, we go and visit the kids during the day and the first day there, I see one of the students and she's got a biggest smile in the whole world. I've never seen a kid smile. I go, what's going on? She goes, Mr. Panier, Mr. Panier, I'm one of the cool kids. I couldn't believe it. No. No. Yeah? It was an amazing experience. The people love Marlboro. I couldn't believe it. Oh, we gotta go to Marlboro. What about Massachusetts? No, no, Marlboro. We gotta go to Marlboro. How about Boston? No, no, it's Marlboro. Not everyone spoke English over there. We're totally immersed in their culture. Even though we have different cultural differences, we're really not that different. In Marlboro, we all want the same for our kids, the students, and our family. We want safe and challenging opportunities for them. We can help make a big difference for tomorrow by inspiring children today. We need to teach them how to work together and be tolerant at a young age. We need to solve problems together at a young age and continue through this through college. We need to encourage and support them as best we can, for they are our future. Thank you very much and thank you for your efforts in education. Arigato gozaimas.
Questions from the committee?
Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Tennessee?
I have to just say, it's heartwarming because I've been fortunate to have three kids now that have had this great chance. And to hear all of you speak about it, it actually brings tears to my eyes and I'm getting emotional. I feel like Michelle. No, but it just, it's really, it's amazing to hear what each of you got out of it and as adults, what you, you got out of it. And I really would strongly encourage anyone that ever has the chance to be a part of the program, whether you go to Japan or you have the chance to host, it's so worthwhile. The experience is absolutely amazing and as they were all saying, life-changing. And thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
Oh, yeah, sure. So I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules to move up Action Item 9A.
Motion made, seconded to move up Action Item 9A. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries.
So 9A is the Whitcomb trip.
Oh, okay.
Rupel?
Yes.
We're going to vote on next year.
Yes. I'm just going to stay.
Anything you want to tell us?
I just want to say that I know that next year is the 20th anniversary of our students going to Akeruno and there's a big party being planned, I have to say. And I also wanted to add that the students will be coming in July of this school year, but starting in 2019, they will actually be coming back during the school year. After, putting my foot down, no, it really wasn't. It was after talking and explaining the whole experience that I think it's, they agreed. The vaccinations have been looked at, so it's going to be, start becoming a real exchange program again.
Thank you very much.
Move to approve the trip for 2018.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries. Thank you very much. MCAS Accountability Report Presentation.
Since Lynn and I are both going to contribute to this, we figured we would stand. So, thank you. That's a very hard act to follow, though, so. Tonight, we wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the new Next Generation MCAS and some of the results that we received a couple of weeks ago. So what is we received a couple of weeks ago. So, what is the Next Generation MCAS? It is an updated version of the nearly twenty-year-old MCAS assessment. It is focused on students' critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, and ability to make connections between reading and writing. It gives a clearer signal of readiness for the next grade level of college and career. It's designed to be given on a computer, although many students in many districts are still giving the paper version. It was first given last spring, the spring of 2017, for grades three through eight in English Language Arts and Math. It will eventually replace all older or legacy MCAS tests in grades three through ten. The high school will pilot the Next Generation MCAS in spring 2018. Each high school in Massachusetts will participate in either an ELA or math pilot and will be expected to have at least twenty-five percent of the tenth graders participate. These, those scores will not count for this year as the pilot, but it will be given this spring. And then for biology and physics questions, tryouts will all, that participation will be voluntary. And full implementation of Next Generation MCAS for high schools will be in spring 2019. So we know parents have a lot of questions regarding MCAS reports and the whole Next Generation MCAS, and we wanted to take a few minutes to answer some of those questions. The most common question is, why did my child score proficient on the older MCAS but only partially meeting expectations this year? In general, the new standards for meeting expectations are more rigorous than the standards for reaching proficient level on the legacy MCAS. Massachusetts educators set the new standards to help signal students' readiness for the next grade level. Spring 2017 is a baseline year on the new test in grades three through eight and spring 2017 scores repeatedly been told should not be compared to previous year's scores. In fact, we're being told that the new MCAS for grades three through eight is being described as a reset of the accountability in the MCAS. So let's look at the differences in the MCAS achievement levels for a minute. So the legacy, we had advanced, proficient, needs improvements, and warnings. The Next Generation is more PAC-like in the descriptions of, of the performance levels. So you have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. Please note that on the partially and the not meeting expectation, on all those parents are told that the school and consultant with the students' parents' guardians should consider whether the subject needs additional academic assistance to succeed in this subject. So we're asked to look at every child and to see if additional assistance is needed. This is an example of one of the English Language Arts parent reports, part of it. This is not, this is a sample from the state. It's not one of our students. And as you can see, five hundred is the new baseline for meeting the expectations. The scale is running from four forty to five sixty, which is different from the legacies. And on that, it shows you not only what, how you performed, your child performed in response on each of the exams, but also how they compared to the district and the state. This section shows the child's overall score out of a possible five hundred and sixty on each Next Generation content. Notice in this example, there's also the Science and Technology, which is still being reported out as a legacy MCAS. So there's, that, for this one is still proficient or above our warning. And then additionally, in the below, parents will have additional information on different steps that they can take. And finally, parent guardian reports have idea of, gives a report out of points, child earned on each standard, and how those, your child performed in relationship to what the average student did. So, for example, the first one is Operations and Algebraic Thinking. That's child scored seven out of ten, where the average number of points earned for meeting expectations was six out of ten. So a parent would know if their child were, performed above or below the average on each standard. This slide shows the performance across the district for each grade. Although student growth was not reported to parents, as you can see, it was provided to, to schools and districts for planning purposes. The middle school achieved at a lower base, baseline point than expected. In reviewing the elementary grades, you will notice that grade three reading and grade four math was within range of the state data. And looking at school results, Kane and Richard's school both met or exceeded the grade three state average in reading. And Richard's school exceeded the state average in grade four math. This is the first time that Richard's school has exceeded the state average since 2013. And although Kane's school has met or exceeded the state average in some grades and content areas, this is the first time they have met the grade three state performance in reading since 2011. We still, we also including reports from the high school. In English, there was a five percent boost in students scoring, scoring proficient. In mathematics, generally even performance with last year's numbers and has been for the last couple of years in both, with a two percent more student scoring proficient. In science, there's an eleven percent boost in advanced scoring and a four percent of that increase from the group formerly needs improvement. Overall, an eighty-seven percent four-year cohort graduation rate, reflecting a four, five point two percent increase. For the last couple of years, we've been trying to report out cohort data, so the next two slides address that. And these are the group of students that have been in the Marlboro Public Schools since, for their whole tested career. So students that were tested in third grade and students that were tested every year through the tenth grade. As you can see, that ELA, there's a pretty steady increase across the grade levels. In math, although we end up with a higher, we still have that middle school dip that's going on in, for that cohort, but it is evidence that students that remain in the Marlboro Public School system achieve at high levels and graduate as college and career ready. This is baseline data. It's not baseline data that we are pleased with in grades three through eight, so we want to make sure that we're taking some specific actions to address and to approve achievement. We don't want to be at state average. We want to be above state average. It's as simple as that. So the first step, we have a couple of actions that we're taking as a district. Beginning of the year, we, we brought in Dr. Daggett to talk to the staff. We are not going to just have him come in once and drop it. We're actually asking them to come in and help us develop some more data and to look at what we have in place. So we're implementation of Daggett tools. We are doing, we are giving , we surveys for students and staff, and that is looking for the, how students are perceiving classroom instruction and what's going on in the, in the classroom, and the perceptions of the teachers, and looking to see where they align and when they do not align. And we are also going to have an instructional practice review to determine the level of rigor and relevance in grade K through twelve curriculum. This is from outside people coming in and looking at this. We're gonna continue IMTSS goals and action steps and we put them on the front burner with assessment, and we have a new assessment pilot at Richard's school that we are happy with. Some of the assessment data that we have, three through eighth through our universal screeners, but we would like some more specific and norm-referenced data. And we increase focus on RTI and PBS consistency at all grades. We have more data training in place and more robust use of data teams at all grade levels. We have our data instructor coming in and coaching all of our data teams next month. We're gonna be working on a district literacy plan as outlined in the district improvement plan. Content supervisors are gonna be expected to use data to identify students in need of specific interventions at the secondary level. We have a reading focus across grade levels at Whitcomb to create stronger reading to complement the in-place writing strategies. We want to increase the enrollment in the Title I Math and Literacy classes at middle, at the middle school. Every, those classes need to be at capacity. We have in-place district-wide training in Wilson reading programs. We have targeted interventions at high schools using expansion, using Panther periods. We are focusing on reading at the high school level utilizing two additional new reading certified special ed staff that are doing direct interventions and will be expanded to include MTSS interventions. We have a focus on the expansion of our Wilson by Foundations Level Three into the grade three at the elementary schools, and a continued focus on consistency of literacy curriculum at the elementary level. And I'm gonna end my part and then go over to, to Lynn by pointing out that the elementary EL instruction has been aligned with the core program. So we purposely and thoughtfully added journeys because there's an alignment between the English Language Development and the core program. Lynn's next.
I think you stole my big line. All right, let me see if I can figure this out. So my portion is to just give you an update more or less on numbers. Last year, we talked a lot about the growing population. I want to thank the committee very much for their continued support in letting us grow our, our program, our staff, which was so unbelievably needed to meet the needs of these students. They were put in place this year. We're excited with the way that it's looking and what we're able to do. So I want to give you a little bit of news on numbers. We do continue to grow. You know, if we include the Early Childhood Center, which has forty-nine identified students, we call them dual-language learners at that age because they're still, well, they're learning both at the same time. And then we have our elementary. I put the three schools together. Together, there are six hundred and fifty-six students. Whitcomb is at about two hundred and nineteen, and the high school is at a hundred and seventy-eight. Daily, this changes, plus or minus, you know, depending on, on the day, but that is what it was when I made it. So those are our most common numbers. And I wanted to show you the breakdown because I find it very important, and we've talked about this in the past. We have a large population of students who are the lowest levels of English proficiency. And these students, their very first year, do not have to take the ELAM CAS. They do take the math and science, although it doesn't count, if you call it that way. However, then the next year, some of them only having learned English for ten months, sometimes a little bit less, they do count on MCAS scores despite the fact that students with strong schooling take five to seven years to become academically proficient. So that's always going to be something that we're working on. We have embedded academic language into our ELD curriculum because you don't need to start with simplistic language. You can start with rich language as long as you're scaffolding it and supporting it. So in grades K to four, the light blue, thirteen percent, are students who are considered Level One. Then we have, and let's see, this is like an eyesight test, ten percent for Level Two, twenty-three percent for Level Three, and then the other two, that gold and the darker blue, is when students could be considered reaching academic proficiency. So that's really when content classes are the sweet spot for them with differentiation. At Whitcomb, you can see it starts to grow even more. Those students who by definition are not academically proficient, even if they are the most amazing English speakers in a very short time and make it to Level Three, the academic language is still considered a barrier to them. And with over fifty percent of them being in that category, and then the gold and the blue being levels four and five, which those students still do need, you know, the, the retail courses that were being offered, all those strategies are really for those students right in there on Level Three as well. And at the high school, which is our population that has really been booming, you see there were over seventy-five percent of these students in levels one, two, and three, with the shortest span of time to pick them up. We have, Lisa Cullington is our EL coordinator up at the high school. She's doing an absolutely amazing job, looking with the staff up there, looking at the courses they're taking, front-loading the courses, really trying to get them to get the absolute best that they can in those first two years to give them a good foundation. So we have some highlights and some things that are new this year. Highlights in elementary, we have our ELD, our English Language Development curriculum for, and I, you know, I love to throw in the letters to keep you guessing. I should have you take quiz. For our English Level Proficiency levels, that's redundant, I apologize for that, one and two, we've been working on the curriculum for many years. We did more work on it. Now it's fully in there. We're looking to see, you know, the teachers tweak. I don't think curriculum will ever be done, but, um, now we get to play with it and look at our assessments and really build it up that way. As Mary mentioned, our curriculum for students who are levels three to five have that connection to journeys. And so the students hear the story in their classroom. They do more language work with their EL teachers and then they're back in the classroom as well. So there's less separation of the subjects and more integration. New this year in elementary, we do have some new models being piloting. The numbers keep growing and so we're attempting some larger groups, but with the thought, making sure that that's still a good thing to do. So far, the results have been very, very good. The teachers will work with a larger group while non-EL students might be in a group with two teachers, you know, to allow sort of a mix of students and teachers and have a lot of collaboration that way. And I've been in a couple of those classrooms. It's full of language, full of talking. I can't ask for more than that. In secondary, our curriculum is in place, levels one to four. We're also working on that and tweaking it. It's actually a lot of fun to do. You know, when you think of curriculum, it's not always just buying that book. In fact, it shouldn't be just buying that book. We don't have a book. We created it. We created it with UDL backwards design, looking at where we wanted students to be, where we wanted to be when they're proficient, going all the way back to the day they arrive, when they may have little to know English. Thanks to this committee and to Marlboro Public Schools, we were able to add bilingual para educator support at Whitcomb in the math and science classes. We had our EL teachers in those classes as much as we could in the past years. Wasn't the best use of their time. We now have these incredible people doing that position who are bilingual or trilingual in that position. Their job is not to translate the content that's going on, but that they're for clarification and support of the students and support to the teachers as well as they're instructing them. The district will be offering a retail SEI course. The state is done offering them. We are offering another one. We have new staff from different states, staff that did not fall under needing to take it during the cohort window. We have made a commitment. We want our staff to know what these strategies are. We want our staff to be able to work with these students to the best of their ability. So we'll be offering an admin class and a teacher class as well in the spring. And as always, we have ongoing PD staff, PD for staff, for the needs of EL and former ELs to make sure that teachers feel as comfortable and confident as possible and have the best practices in their classroom. So we have a lot going on and a lot of great students. And I always, I think I always come during the Akiruno presentation, and I don't know whether it's because then I get to show how short I am with seventh graders and have to move the mic, or it might be because it's such a beautiful, I, I see it as so seamless. Those students go and they get to experience what our newest Marlboro students experience every day, and I think that's priceless. So I love that, that sight. And Rachel, I forget her last name, said she's gonna make a point to say hello to students because she, now she knows what it feels like. Thought that was lovely.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Ms. Tennessee?
Thank you. Um, Lynn, I gotta tell you, seeing that six fifty-six in elementary is pretty staggering, truthfully, because I, I'm considering what you're talking about as new students coming in. And I think to Mary's slide earlier about looking at the cohort that's graduating on through versus our students that aren't necessarily, they haven't gone through, matriculating through. What's great about that six fifty-six is many of them started at the ECC, were born in Marlboro, born in Worcester. Those are our students who are going to do very well and have been with us since kindergarten. A lot of them, the high school students are our newer, you know, to Marlboro friends, but these, a lot of those six hundred, of course, we get new students all the time, too. A lot of them start with us in kindergarten, which is exciting. And I'm curious, just to understand, with some of the kids that are in the high school grouping, yet that many of them are coming in in that sly, you know, range, are you able, and, and sorry, this is for me to learn a little bit here, the journeys, literacy, are you able to help and use that? I know, I mean, I know that's more aimed towards elementary, but it is early. For that reason, we, we do have literacy courses for those students. We're using low readability, high-interest books with those students because you don't want to give them childish books. So, not that Journeys is, but it is meant for younger kids. So, not that journeys is, but it is meant for younger kids. So we use different materials with them and different strategies. And we're always looking, much as, like, as Whitcomb's growing, we are bulking up our literacy as well in EL to make sure they're getting the richest and strongest instruction because they are not in ELA classes while they're in ELD. So we need to make sure that we give them that.
Okay.
The Level One-twos, of course, are not.
Well, and that's what I was wondering, because obviously, it's a tight time period for them to try and get acclimated, and then obviously, their scores are going to be affecting our overall, from a district standpoint, which, that's something to kind of understand, with the new test being offered as well.
What's great is with the model curriculum units that the state has developed, they had some for ESL as well, and that is what we based our curriculum off of. And so their curriculum is how to attack content from a language standpoint. So what we did is we took what they, all their knowledge and all of what they were working on, and we turned it into our ELD classrooms. And so right off the bat, you know, we may be talking about transportation, we may be talking about job skills, but at the same time, it's justifying, comparing, stating claims, opinions, citing evidence, all of that starts Week One.
Okay. And then actually, to Mary, a quick question. You mentioned about the pilot of the Next Generation MCAS.
For the high school.
This spring at the high school. So I'm curious, how does that affect, then, the tenth graders that would then be in that crux of, you know, you need to, you need to be meeting the graduation requirements? So I'm just curious what's happening there.
It's actually an extra test. It's a pilot. Every high school is mandated to have twenty-five students. You could elect to do more in either ELA or math, and you can volunteer to do science as well. And I've spoken with Principal Cleary. He wants to get as many as possible exposed to, because ironically enough, the highest level of our students haven't used the computer-based testing. So anything you can do to help that along, but this year, they will not count. It's the legacy test that will still count.
Right, so they'll just, there will be an option for taking like a second test or whatever.
As a pilot.
Right, as a pilot.
And no test scores would be reported on individual students or for the school.
Okay.
They haven't also notified us of the exact timeline, but when we did a pilot for the science last year at Whitcomb School, it happened about two weeks after the window of regular MCAS closed. So they separated it out. It was only one day, so it wasn't the endurance test.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. Is, so who is going to teach the retail to the new, are you guys?
So we have, yes, so Lynn is doing one, yes, who, we have, we're very fortunate that we have Lynn and Beth, and do we have someone else? And Lisa as well, but she's not teaching.
Lisa's not doing it this year, but.
Yeah, but we have a number of staff members that taught it for the state over the last couple of years. So, yeah, they're going to continue, but just do it from Marlboro.
I think the most highly rated retail instructors is.
Is you.
Yes, Beth and I.
Of course. And when do you, when will you do that? I mean, is it embedded in the school day, or they do it after?
After school. Same hours, you know, normally they're four to seven, four in the afternoon until seven at night, January to April.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to alert you of a new mandated health screening tool that is for all middle and high school students. It's called ESPT, another acronym. It stands for Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral for Treatment. One grade says the state must be screened every year, as is done for vision, hearing, heights and weights, and so on. This is an evidence-based tool for early detection of risky behaviors, alcohol and drug use, et cetera. The screenings are brief and confidential. They occur during ninth-grade wellness classes during the week of October twenty-third, and I believe they are happening as we speak in seventh grade at the middle school. Trained nurses and school adjustment counselors conduct these screenings. Last year, it was rolled out. We only had seventh grade who were screened, but now it is mandated by the state. Also want to give a thanks to Boston Scientific for their continued partnership. They hosted the ninth-grade STEM team for a tour and a lean manufacturing simulation on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, from eight-thirty to twelve, and provided lunch. As many of you know, we just returned not long ago from the joint conference. The theme of this year's joint school committees and superintendent's conference was mapping the path for student success, college career life. I served on a panel called Implementing High Quality College and Career Pathways. The state is launching a major initiative to increase access to high-quality college and career pathways. Mrs. Hennessy was there as well cheering us on. Additionally, we presented, it was myself, STEM Director Dan Riley, Supervisor of Counseling Services Sharon Buckley, and School Committee Member Heidi Matthews. We presented a very well-received session called Charting Courses for College and Career Readiness. Dr. Bill Daggett was the keynote speaker of this joint conference, reinforcing the message, as Mary mentioned, he was our opening day speaker, and underscored the importance of rigor and relevance in our schools. Joining Heidi at the conference, and she was on our panel, was Mayor Vigent, I believe the only mayor that was there for the few days, so nice distinction. Thank you for coming.
Again.
Again, was the only mayor there, again. Catherine Hennessy, Denise Ryan, and Michelle Bodenhendiger. I also wanted to tell you a little bit about the Massachusetts Municipal Association Contest. This is run by the Massachusetts Municipal Association with the goal of encouraging potential local leaders of the future to reflect on the role of key elected officials in municipal services. So there was a poster and an essay contest, poster contest targeting third graders, essay eighth graders. Third graders created posters depicting a municipal service of their choosing. Richer submitted sixty-one, Jarik submitted forty-seven, Kane submitted one hundred and fifty. Eighth-grade students described what they would do as mayor of Marlboro, and we got sixteen solid submissions. We thank these students for their efforts, as well as Mayor Vigent for heading over to the middle school, to Mr. Masacott's class, to chat with them about what being mayor is really like, and we hope there is a winner among them. In your packet, I have included a document called Marlboro Public Schools Partnerships Opportunities. This was presented at the urging of the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation as a way for companies, both established companies and new to Marlboro, to figure out a way to get involved with the schools, from judging, everything from judging at our science and engineering fairs, to mentoring students, to tours, as we just talked about, Boston Scientific, to helping students have some meaningful internships, to underwriting experiences that fall outside of the school day. We just had a meeting today of the School Engagement Subcommittee of the MEDC, and this was certainly well-received. We are looking currently to underwrite Camp Invention, something that Mary Murphy and I have been working on, which is a STEM camp for one week during the summer with a bit of a hefty price tag, and we're looking to have some scholarship in for our students there. More to follow. John and Abigail, it's that time of year. The scholarship winners are as follows. Couple of familiar names here. That was a hook. And pardon me if I mispronounce, I'll do the best I can. These students are encouraged to go to college in Massachusetts at one of our top-notch public higher education institutes. There is a formula by which you are awarded this opportunity, and this choice is based basically on outstanding MCAS results. For 2018, it's my pleasure to read this lengthy list. Thomas Adamson, Rebecca Aguiar, Jose Arquila Casada, Cassandra Arsenal, Harrison Avery, Ivana Owada, Danielle Bermudez, Hala Braga, Alexandra Buchanan, Trey Buchanan, Andrew Cameron, Jacob Cardona, Vernon Chen, Dylan Chaccio, Ryan Clifford, Cynthia Kotay, Kylie Craig, Rachel Curley, Kaylee Davis, Gabriel De Arugio, Igor de Moraes, Lillian Dickman, Christopher Di Donato, Megan Dion, our own Heidi De Persio, congratulations. Erin Doherty, Evan Doherty, Hayden Janetti, David Hanrahan, Lior Harrell, Christina Hatch, Madison Hediger, who was here not long ago, Bailey Honer Chavez, Sabika Hussein, Ivy Key, Shane Kiernan, Catherine Kilpatrick, Julia Lambert, Katrina Lambert, Joseph Landry, Emily Lucas, Emily Magoo, Courtney Matthews, familiar name, Owen McCarthy, Gina McGovern, Ryan Melker, Alexander Morse, Stephen Moynihan, Ryan Nagel, Daniela Norajo Zerate, Florence Ing, Michelle Nie, Alyssa O'Leary, Brian Orum, Christian Reagan, Devin Ron, Thomas Redden, Michael Redman, Jeffrey Ruiz, Olivia Sawicki, Rose Shade, Caitlin Silva, Andrea Sims, Henry Seau, Griffin St. Armore, Maria Stefanova, Andree Tashuk, Amanda Valinsky, Catherine Walsh, Max Whitmore, Alexander Young, and finally, Sarah Zagzurg. Congratulations to all of those students and to you, Heidi.
Seventy-two of our students.
Seventy-two. That's, I had not counted. I'm not surprised you had. That's good. Thank you very much.
That's what I do.
Seventy-two.
This class is a year of encounter.
It's a larger class this year than previous years, so. One other thing, I did want to acknowledge, we did have the death of a kindergarten student, Yadi Al Familia, not long ago. I wanted to commend Principal Scazza. This child was a kindergarten student at Richer School. Teacher Rachel Timmons, and the School Adjustment Counselor Karen Rivera, as well as all of the district support staff for their help at this difficult time. I wanted to read to you a quote from a family member of a Richer student who got in touch with Principal Scazza and said, I quote, "I just wanted to let you know how amazed I am once again about Richer School. What has happened is so tragic for all, and being there today to see the compassion, love, and caring spirit in that school was unbelievable. From the administration, teachers, parents, and children, it truly is amazing." So I wanted to commend Richer and also send condolences to that family. I also would like to congratulate our newly-elected school committee members, not newly-elected, but second-time or newly re-elected, yes, Earl Geary, Michelle Bodenhendiger, and of course Denise Ryan, on their reelection to school committee, and of course, to Mayor Vigent on his unprecedented fourth term as mayor. So now the important decision is when will the picture be, so that we can update the school committee website. I will leave it to you to determine when hair will look the best and make sure that.
We're still the same people.
I know, but it needs to be an updated picture, so perhaps on the twenty-eighth of November, if not December twelfth.
How long does it take to grow the hair?
Grow the hair?
Yeah.
There's no answer I could give that's possibly going to be right on that one. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Assistant Superintendent Murphy.
Just a brief report. The first thing was that on November seventh, there was our first full professional development day. I attached to my report the full choice catalog, and all MEA members went on to Teach Point and registered for different choices. They were all filled. We also had wait lists for the first time this year, which we were able to take care of most requests. Select paraeducators were assigned to safety care on this day as well, so that we do not, we're trying to take advantage of the professional development days to do safety care trainings for paraeducators and pathway staff, so that they don't get trained during school days. So we take advantage of that. And then all new pathway staff had a pathways boot camp, but other than that, more experienced behavior techs joined the paraeducators in the selections that, the two sessions, Effective Questioning and Checking for Understanding, and Understanding Standards-Based and Differentiated Instruction classrooms. Also, on November seventh, the MTSS Steering Committee met for the first time, and at that meeting, we focused on the progress of each building. We also identified the action steps for each building at that meeting. We almost completed the FY eighteen goals for the district and the MTSS committee. We started identifying district-wide tools that we will be collecting to share with our staff. We'll also be collecting resources to be shared with parents, and those resources will include some of the same materials that the staff will have, because we don't have any secrets, so we want to make sure that the parents see what the staff does. We're also been, we're going to finish a document of district-wide common vocabulary that we will use when referring to RTI, MTSS, PBIS. The perfect example is that when there is a discipline referral at the elementary schools, we're going to start using the same major minor infraction that aligns to Whitcomb School, and we're sharing that vocabulary with the high school as well. So that our expectations are the same, pre-K through twelve, and that we're using the same vocabulary. And then we're going to be looking at the expansion of Aspen use for those discipline referrals, and once we do that, we would like to open the parent portal, because parents should be able to see if there are any issues or anything that is going on in school on a regular basis. So those are two actions that we've stated.
Yes?
Questions from the committee? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm a part of the MTSS group, and I really felt like there was a lot of really great discussion, especially at this last meeting. I think it might be good at some point if the full committee could get a little bit of an update about some of the assessment, such as the pilot assessment that Richer School is going to be trying out, because I know you've mentioned in the past that FAST, which we have been using, may not necessarily be the one to extend. So I think before we get down the road towards the budget, so that everybody could have some of that vision as well, I really want to commend the discussion about the common vocabulary district-wide, because I think it's important that there is consistency, not only for the students, but the staff, to make sure that everybody's on the same page about expectations, so it doesn't really trickle the wrong way. And so I'm happy that that's going to happen, because I think that's really important, that all of the buildings are sharing that information, and discipline will be followed through on, throughout. So I, again, I would say, some of the points that were brought up during that meeting, I think it'd be helpful for all the committee to hear a little bit more about within the next couple of months.
I think specifically, the vocabulary would be really beneficial for the community to hear, and the perfect example that I think of is the discussion that we had about the disrespect can be a minor discipline referral or can be a major, and there really needs to be specific examples of what that difference is and that we all understand that.
Agreed, and I think to your point that the parents as well, you know, the parents as well as the staff and students all need to be on the same page, so we can help and reinforce all throughout. If we don't have that common vocabulary, everyone's going to have their own perspective in regards to, you know, my parenting versus your parenting, your teaching versus someone else's teaching. So to get everybody on the same platform, I think, is exceptionally helpful.
Yeah, and then some of the examples, too, because I know that Whitcomb School shared the fact that when there is something that happens in school, that there's been an explicit lesson plan about, that that lesson plan is shared with the family so that they see exactly the language and what was.
Exactly. And I think also something that came up, which I think is important to make sure we're all understanding, too, is opening and the expansion of using Aspen is allowing for vertical alignment, if you will, so that if there are issues that may have cropped up previously, it will be able to be seen and understood, so hopefully, the right interventions, the right support, whether it be counseling support, can help along the way. And I think that's really critical as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes for September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carries. Minutes of October tenth, two thousand seventeen. Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carries. Minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carries. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. Assistant Superintendent Bergeron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I have a couple transfers for you. Most of them have to do with the fact that we've recently done our lane changes for the fall. the fall for some of our professional staff, and additionally, some of the education stipend changes in the Unit B contract have been updated with new information. So, the first one is transferring available balance from the director line over to the director of EL line to cover someone moving to a higher education stipend. We have an available balance in the director line, because we've hired lower than what we budgeted for in FY-eighteen, so we're able to use those savings to cover that deficit for this year, and then we're updating the FY-nineteen budget to clear up both accounts. The next one is to cover a lane change for a nurse. We still have some additional summer savings from the nursing line, so we're able to use the savings from the summer nursing line to cover the lane change for the nurse down here at ECC. Additionally, the coordinator of EL line was slightly over budget, I mean, under budget, I should say, and that can cover the slightly over-budget amount for the coordinator for special education. The coordinator for special education, that's strictly for summer services, so that went a little bit above budget, because we needed some additional help for some of our programming, but we did have the money available in our EL lines to be able to cover that. In the district-wide lines, we had to use savings from the hiring of our informational technology specialists to offset the expenses for the elementary. It's, we're using one hire to offset another at a lower rate. We have to also use some of our savings from, there's a line for adjustment counselor. We actually moved that position to be more of a guidance position, although it will be both. It will have both licenses, but we budgeted it in one place, we're simply moving the money to where it needs to go for the guidance line at this time, and that's going to be at the Hildreis School. We also have to move some funds from speech therapy to cover lane changes. We had a lot of lane changes in the budget, most of them I don't have to bring in front of you, but a couple, when they're very specific lines, only one person's in the line, I have to bring them so that we can cover the deficits. But we had enough money available to be able to cover that without any issues. And the last is just, Principal Cleary asked me to bring this one. He's asking to transfer money from his supply line to cover his increased cost dues for Niasc, BPA, and MidWatch leagues. MidWatch is generally athletic, but there's also a principals group that meets, so he's asking to use some of his supply line to cover these additional cost of dues, and I told him I would bring it in front of the committee tonight, so that way he can get his P.O.'s done.
Motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Update on Esteban Valley Collaborative.
So DESI regulations require that collaborative board members provide four updates for that collaborative to school committees each year. Please let this report serve as one of four. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the committee? No questions? Thank you very much.
It's a nice, it's a nice little recap of what's going on. I enjoyed reading it.
Donations. Mass DESI Early Literacy Grant, Jarrett School, fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Wegman Supermarket, Jarrett School, bilingual night, two hundred dollars.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Anafid Supermarket, Kane School, thirty-six dollars, thirty-three cents.
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, pose carries. Reports of subcommittees. I'm always looking that way.
I'm sorry.
This is Matthews.
The negotiating subcommittee opened with the MEA yesterday, and we will be moving forward in the next, well, couple of weeks, a little bit, a little bit. Successful path to a fruitful conversation.
Are you doing IBB or regular IBB?
We're going to try to do IBB again, yes.
Awesome.
Yes, that is the...
The grown-up going to do it.
Any other updates?
Did you do your fiduciary responsibility?
That wasn't under a subcommittee.
Oh, sorry.
Members forum, fiduciary responsibility.
Yes, as delegate, thank you all. You weren't here to protect me, even. So, want to report out the resolutions that you voted on while I was away. Michelle and I were so lucky to attend this...
Marathon session.
So there were seven resolutions. The first one took us forty-five minutes. I thought we were going to be there all night. So the first one, which was the movement of the Chapter Seventy funding, which you all approved, to ask for the change to March fifteenth. Of course, apparently your conversation was about that the VOTECs and others would not want that date of March fifteenth, which of course they didn't. There was actually a motion to amend it to January thirty-first, which, that passed. So the motion was then approved after forty-five minutes at January thirty-first for that Resolution two, reform of the circuit breaker funding, that passed as you voted. Number three, litigation for fair school finance, you voted against that, it passed. I tried, I tried. They just feel like throwing more money at more litigation that's going to get them nowhere is a good thing to do.
I don't think they think it's going to get them nowhere.
It's continued money is something that has gotten them nowhere. No, I'm sorry, that one I didn't agree with at all either, and I wasn't here to vote the first time. Resolution four, privatization of public education oversight of public schools, including small and regional districts, that passed as well, as you voted. Use of federal funds under resolution five, was, we, the district voted no, it passed. They wanted more money allocated, or not allocate, sorry, from DESI. And number six, the foundation budget changes, recommended yes, that passed yes, and the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid, which actually also did have heated conversation regarding Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, if that should be taken out, since Medicaid is really the question here, not the, not the medical plan that gets you there, but the, but that amendment did not pass, but the resolution passed. So, we were actually out of there in ten minutes after that forty-five minutes. Everything else went quickly, so. And we will update you and Mr. Geary about the rest of our stuff when we have our next workshop.
Thank you. Any other members want to be heard?
What about the...
What's that?
Did you look?
Oh, and I signed the warrants, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I reviewed and signed the warrants with Mr. Bergeron tonight.
Tennessee.
Thank you. So, the state conference did happen, as you mentioned, and it was really informative. I have to say, again, each time I go, I get a lot out of it, so, good to attend it, and good PD for all of us. And I'm going to say thank you to you, sir, because I appreciate that you take the time to come down there. I think it actually says a lot about Marlboro and about our committee, and the conviction that we have to do the best that we can on behalf of the community, so, kudos to you. And with that, I also wanted to do a quick mention, because I know cross-country was mentioned, but we had a lot of athletic teams that really did quite well this fall. Field hockey, volleyball, girls soccer, and football all made it into different rounds of playoffs for cross-country. Not only did the team do, teams did well, but Brian Orem, Kristiana Kearns, and Noel Bass are all running on Saturday in states, which is a huge feat. And the boys soccer team's playing right now, and I have no update yet.
Zero-zero at half.
Okay, zero-zero at half.
So if you wanted to watch it, forget about it, because we just got the update.
Which is all good.
Only the first half.
It's at Westfield State.
Yeah, but I, you know, I just want to say kudos to the coaching, and the coaches, and to Jeff, and also, I'm going to say, you know, for the city, for putting the funding behind that wonderful new turf field, because it's getting used past just Marlboro using it. Right now, it's being used by some of the championships across the state, so I think that's great, because it brings recognition to our community. And we've heard nothing, I have to say, as a parent attending, we have heard nothing but glowing reports from different communities, people coming here and talking about what an incredible field this is. So, please pass that back to the city councilors.
Yeah, they were great in funding it, appreciate it. We got our second one, we're working on, and we'll have finished shortly, and we have to work, tweak the volume on the PA system a little bit to address some issues the neighbors are having, but, no, it came out beautiful. And I had an opportunity to go to the soccer game down there the other night for a little while. I went to the majority of the football games this year, and including the one at St. John's, and I have to say, the participation and attendance from the people watching these games from the city of Marlboro, unbelievable. Between the students and the parents and people just going to watch these games. I know at St. John's, we had as many people there as they did. When we go to away games, we can match anyone with the attendance we have, so, you know, thank everyone that's going to support all these teams, so.
Yeah, and then the last thing was actually bringing up about the STEM Summit, that was today. Again, I was really happy to be able to be there in attendance, and I, I have to say, Von Spicer, who was there, the newly-elected mayor of Framingham, was phenomenal. And I'm really excited about the potential opportunity of our community working with Framingham. We have a lot of similarities about some of the challenges, and I would also say, really incredible to hear her speak, because she's bringing a passion for education, which I think is going to be a real boost for that community, and can tie with us, and was very eager to actually meet with you and talk with you about opportunities. So she was great to listen to. I went to, with Mary and I, went to a seminar on digital literacy, which was phenomenal, and I have to say, I kept sitting there the whole time, thinking about how utilization of digital literacy can help some of our ELL students, really bridging the gap, as well as some of our other students that are just having challenges, because these videos can really show them real-life applications to get across the points. Really just smart, smart learning. And then, really a shout-out to the tenth-grade STEM team that were there and had a really interactive participatory seminar, which got to be involved with. And I have to say, you know, it just really makes you proud. You know, we may have our challenges, but we have a lot of things going exceptionally well here, and a lot of opportunity, and I think opportunity is really what I want to focus on. We have a lot of opportunity, the AP classes that Ms. Hediger was speaking about, we have a lot here, so.
And we have to give credit to Karen Palida for the accidental shout-out to Marlboro.
That was true.
Yeah, hey. It worked to our advantage.
It worked, we got Marlboro on the map there again.
She was supposed to be talking about Marblehead, but saw us and said Marlboro, and we took the credit.
Just to let you know, I did reach out to the mayor of that last week, haven't heard back from her yet. I'm sure she's going through a whirlwind of things, and I'm sure will be sitting down shortly.
Awesome.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing about the conference, the, the panel that we presented at our Division Four meeting, which followed it, we talked about what we're going to do to kind of professional development events during the course of the year, and the division voted to have basically that presentation, you know, like a continuation of a discussion on early college pathways and that sort of thing. People were really, really jazzed by it and want to hear more.
And Michelle's neglecting that, we also have to give a shout-out, that she is the newly-elected chair to our Division Four.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, she suckered me into guess what, secretary.
She takes such good notes.
Oh, there we go.
Everyone, quickie. May I just say that tomorrow, Mr. Bergeron and I are hosting the superintendent and business manager from Hudson to discuss some business, as well as a friendly wager regarding the Hudson-Marlboro football game, details of which will be disclosed later.
Uh-huh.
Anything else?
Very nice, very nice. Seeing none, move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose carries. Thank you very much.